Everyone, my name is Robert Tatro. I am the Chair of the Auburn Zoning Board of Appeals and I am calling this meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Allow me to write, read my script here. I call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM on May 22nd, 2025. I'd like to welcome everyone to today's meeting of the zoning board of appeals and thank you for attending. Please note the meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone here recording this meeting this evening? Hearing none, seeing none? And while I'm at it, on the subject of electronic devices, if you have any, if you could turn them down to either silent or just vibrate, whatever it is. In the interest of time, we're going to limit each speaker's comments to two minutes. Please be concise and avoid repetitive points and already made by others. If a point has been covered, we kindly ask that you refrain from repeating it to ensure that we allow everyone the chance to contribute. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Mr. Chairman, motion to open the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none? Okay, so we have our first hearing this evening. The 6 o'clock PM applicant, Planet Fitness, requesting a special permit under section 7.6, Table 761, of the Auburn zoning by law for a new sign located on the building wall at 368 Southbridge Street, map 33, parcel 081. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to open the hearing.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none? Is the applicant present? Hi, if you could just approach the lectern, give us an overview of what you'd like to accomplish, please?
How are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good, we're just, we're proposing a sign that is 161 square feet, well, 161.6 square feet. The building's set back 425 feet from the road, so we don't feel like it's too much to ask. The sign band is almost the front of the store and the sign at 90 square feet would just be too small.
Okay. Do we have any abutters that would like to comment on this hearing this evening? Hearing none, seeing none? Vice Chair, Maron, to you, sir.
If I may, just a point of Did I miss something? No.
Okay.
But if, if I could just ask the applicant to announce your name for the record.
Oh, thank you.
Anne Ramsey from Viewpoint Sign and Honing.
Ah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Administrative, that's what I was looking for.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I didn't have, is there going to be lighting in the signage?
Yes. Yep, it's facelit.
I'm going to reserve it, Chairman. I don't have any specific questions.
Okay, Mr. Cussy?
No questions.
Push?
I don't have any questions.
Ms. Gabedian? Ms. Roach?
Um, no.
Okay. I mean, I think these are pretty much standard sizes for the I think, what do we call these now? The basic for every building that Planet Fitness does, these are generally speaking, these are standard sizes of signs that they use for almost every location, correct?
Yes, they're actually a little bit smaller because they no longer have a gear on the side of the building.
Because they no longer hang out with what, I'm sorry?
They no longer have the big gear. There used to be a big gear and then the letters.
Oh, right, okay.
It's actually a lot smaller now.
Okay, good, just to know, okay. Any other questions, concerns?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, so this is for a wall sign, correct?
Correct.
Is there going to be any, any standing pole signs in addition?
There is a pole sign out front, but it's to code and it's already there, so it's just a face change.
So no relief needed for the existing pole sign? Just the relief on the size of
Correct.
The wall sign? Okay, thank you very much. I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anyone else going around? Okay. So do I have a motion on the 6:00 PM applicant, oh, excuse me, a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none? Any comments, conversations?
So the applicant's asking for relief for size, I forgot my reading glasses, I apologize. Thank you, Mr. Cussy, I apologize, I don't want to hold you, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay. We're here for it.
But we're just looking for Okay, so it's just a size variant from the grid, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's nothing with lighting, there's none of the, there's no projection.
Ms. Chairman, I'd be prepared to make a motion to approve with standard conditions.
Uh, do I, okay, so I have a motion to approve with standard conditions, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll just do a roll call vote. Vice Chair, Matt?
Point of order, sorry, should you move someone forward with Mr. Chacolo being absent?
Ah, that's a very good, one, two, three, four, do we need that?
You don't, just, I
Yeah, no, I think we can just do it with the four, we're all set. It's not really a, you know. Okay, so Vice Chair, Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Cussy?
Prove.
Ms. Roach?
I approve.
And I vote to approve, okay? So you can contact the Department of Development Inspection Services and they'll get you through the rest of the process and get you paperwork.
Perfect, thank you very much.
When do you have an anticipating date of opening?
I think it's mid-September or late September.
Oh, still a little ways away yet, okay.
A little bit.
But thank you very much, I appreciate it, have a great night.
Have a great day.
So we're going to give this a minute to clear out and then we'll move on. Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you got a motion to close the hearing?
Mr. Chairman, motion to close the hearing.
And I got a second for Mr. Maron, all in favor?
Second.
Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none? Thank you. Okay. We'll let them clear out. Okay, good evening, everyone. So we are moving on, it appears as though we're relatively quiet, to our continuation of the Perry Place LLC 40B comprehensive permit. This is an open hearing, so we are not making any motions to reopen, it has been continually open. And what I'm going to do is, I just have some more information. As you know, this is a constantly changing application process. So I'm going to, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to try to work us through this to see if anything is close to as possible completion as I can. But there are some variables that might take place that may require an additional vote in June. But I'm going to get to that when I get to that. So what I want to do first is, there was a meeting that took place with the applicant and some members of the town and myself, and they went through some various safety and construction-related changes that I think are pertinent, that I would like to do is turn over to the applicant right now and allow him to bring us up to date on what his change in the application is. Or changes, I should say, excuse me. So to you, sir, if I could.
Okay.
And thank you.
Thank you. James Venacasa, 16 Perry Place. So as you said, we did have a meeting. One of the new what we dropped, what I dropped, actually emailed yesterday to Tom, but also dropped off copies to everybody today. We did have a letter from an attorney just showing that we do have the rights to do the improvements on the road. So I'm sure, just for the file, you guys have that now, from our attorney, from Jason St. Pierre. Also, so going through, there was, there was some changes that were proposed and I believe they were on, it was, kind of took place on the original agreement that we were negotiating with, with the with the select board
Correct.
For the original lip. So there was the handicap. Well, the first thing was the $100,000 donation to the town was proposed. It was discussed with the select board, there was never an agreement to actually do that, but there was the, a discussion of a $100,000 donation. It was for basically events, I want to say, is there fireworks that happened in
Right, certain kind of events that they have.
Yeah, certain type of events. It wasn't restricted to one thing, it was a kind of, just a donation. It was 100,000 and it was going to be, you know, put towards, at the occupancy of each building, so a third, a third, a third. There was also a, a sign that we're going to be put up for a, it is just a sign. When I originally looked at it, I thought they were asking for like a bus stop, like a bench kind of area. This would just be a sign somewhere closer to Perry Street. We'll work with the, the school department and DPW to see if it's, if it's possible that there's a sign there.
Referring to is their addition of a designated school bus area at one point on Perry Place based on the need of the town. So just to be clear on that one. Go ahead, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Nope, nope, thank you. And then there was an installation of a pedestrian, a solar-powered rectangular flashing sign that would be put at the end of Perry Street, at Auburn Street. Also, a, the installation of an ADA compliant ramp at the existing crosswalk on Auburn Street and the intersection of Perry Street. Some more towards the end.
Mr. Venacasa, excuse me, the flashing sign is what kind of sign?
Solar-powered, just like a solar-powered flashing sign to, you know, for crossing.
What's the signage?
Um, I would have to get a detail on it, but it's just a rectangular beacon existing, just a crosswalk sign, basically.
It's a walk, don't walk.
Okay, yeah. I don't have a detail, detail of it, but basically a crosswalk sign.
I didn't, I didn't know if it was an advertising sign or
Oh. It was an arrow pointing down to us? No, no, it's a crosswalk sign.
Or, or
I think those were the big changes, obviously, there's still the, all the improvements to Perry, to Perry Street, Perry Road and all of that. So is that, sorry.
I'm sorry, I hear that somebody walked in the, in the
Oh, in that room?
Our acoustic
I couldn't tell if that was somebody talking over there or talking behind me.
No, it just amplifies their voices back, I apologize.
So, yeah, those were the changes, those were the things that we were, we were discussing as far as, you know, moving forward with a lip. Some of the things that we were discussing and, you know, I guess turn back to the board, see if there's any other questions or anything else.
I think there was also some discussion on modifying a building too, correct? Is that something that's still on the table? What's going on with that?
Yeah, if, if we discussed it, obviously, you know, it's, it's not the ideal. You know, we're trying to obviously do affordable housing, so we are trying to obviously, you know, density is the way that we, we accomplish that, the way that we do that. We are open to a discussion about that, if that's something that the boards wants to
And what would be the number of apartments or units, I apologize, that we'd be willing to
So there is, so there's 16 per floor, there's 64 unit buildings. Obviously, there's, there's three buildings, I think the one, the 24-unit building, I don't think is much of a concern as, as the 264s, I think the 264s were more of a concern. So that's the one that has 16 per floor, is what we have on each one of those.
Okay. I guess Be willing to reduce a floor that was necessary and change a roof line, is that what I understand to be correct? Now, again, I want to, I'm pointing these things out to the board because I want people to understand that these are some of the concerns that the abutters had. Right, so he's, and again, I'm not advocating for or against, I'm just clarifying that the intention here was to remove a full floor, change the roof line of the building that would be closest to the largest property, so it would be less of a impair, you know
Less invasive, right?
No difficulty with his view, I guess, if you will.
Do, I can put the plan over here.
Obviously, this building right here, this is the one that's going to be most impacted by neighbors, this one is a little too many. This one that we don't think is as much of, as much of a concern as this one, I think this one has the basic impact.
Right. Okay.
So that's the one that we would, yeah, we propose.
Sure, okay.
So we'd lose 16 units
Okay.
Make that one, that's it, you know, obviously, if we could get the approval.
Mm-hmm.
If we didn't, obviously, we'd want to go back to the board.
Sure. Understood. Hang on, town, ma'am?
This one right here is just a, uh, cable
Yeah, whatever they can see.
Can we put that up on the screen like we've done in the past?
I don't know what we have for technology here because we have people that are, we have split meetings this evening, so we have one person here and one person there, so
No, I can put it, I can pick it up. We can't get it on the screen. Okay. So which building?
We don't have the electric, it's only
It, there's only, I mean, there's only Yeah, there's only, there's only two buildings.
You're welcome to approach the plan.
So we're going to have Okay, which one are you reducing? This one is obviously, I'm looking over, uh, 290. This is the one that's supposed to be
Did you want to continue or do you want to take a break there and let the abutters comment on that?
It's entirely up to you. Yeah, it's totally, really totally up to
Do you have any questions, concerns or comments of the abutters that are here that would like to discuss those? The reason I'm giving you this opportunity, Mr. Largis and, and all the abutters, honestly, is because I want to explain to you that a couple of things that we need to make sure that we're clear on is that if the, I'm just going to hypothetically, this is all hypotheticals, if this board votes against this project, hypothetically speaking, and it goes to the appeal process, it's very, very likely that the appeal process would overturn that, okay? If that does take place, and again, this is all hypothetical, if that does go on and he wins the appeal process, they go back to the original plan, everything that they wanted to do for two years of negotiations would be lost. I'm just letting you know that, I want the abutters to understand that.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Well, if, if we can reduce one, why can't we reduce two? Because this is going to be a, a major thing, I mean, 16, 30, 30 3, 34 units is a lot of traffic going up and down Perry Street.
Again, we're not talking about the safety issues, we're talking about whether it's more palatable to the abutters because that was at one point you were concerned with height.
Correct. So if we can reduce one building size, why can't we reduce the two? I mean, you're still talking
I can't answer that question, I'll, I'll let it go back to them, but I'm assuming it's because of price.
And we were at only six feet, correct, on reducing the height on the roof?
To go, wouldn't drop it.
Hold on.
Dropping the roof line down six feet?
I forgot exactly what was the answer, to be honest with you. Around, around six, 10 feet, something like that.
Okay, so, I mean, I'd like to get a, a measurement on the, the whole thing from floor to, to peak. If, if possible.
Each, each, each floor is about 11 feet.
Right.
Because you have the ceiling height plus, plus your, your, you know, your ceiling joists. So by the time you're done, when you've reduced down one foot, it's about 11 feet per floor.
Okay.
Roughly, roughly.
And then the, the roof line is how many feet we're talking?
I don't want to misrepresent it, I'm not, I'm not exactly
You're pretty good at that stuff, would you happen to know what the roof line is, minus the, if the way the roof line is modified on building three? Would you know what the roof height would be?
Same with the gable, it's just going to go down 11 feet.
It's going to come down 11 feet total. Okay, so it's going to drop 11 feet total.
Because the width is not going to change, so you're just taking a, taking a sandwich out
We're doing those, I think what, what, what Dan is, and I don't mean to speak for you, but I believe what Dan's talking about is how, how we're going to do the tub roofs and how we're reducing the ridge down.
Okay.
Still do the tub roof, yeah, style.
You're doing parapets?
I don't know, I don't know if it's that word.
Build your extra walls up?
Yep, and then, so it'll come, it won't come up to, it won't come up to the ridge. They'll, they'll come up basically just a little bit to cover, you know, our condensers and everything that would go inside. So it's going to be, it would be flat, but then obviously, what they did is then they take the roof lines to basically cover because we're going to put all of our condensers and everything up on the roof.
It's all, it's all open inside that
Yeah, but, yeah, drops right down.
That's a straight, that's a parapet.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's going to take up the, the distance of
Six, eight, 10 feet, something.
Okay, yeah, the only
So we're going from 66 feet down to 46 feet?
And then with this, it'd be down to 36 feet. Or so, 37 feet, when you take the four-story up.
Because then technically, I think this building wouldn't even need to require a waiver because of the way that the, the measure, the way the measurements go in Auburn. Three-story building, we wouldn't have to have the waiver for, yeah.
Or the ceiling joint.
Correct, yeah. So, so we'd only be asking for the waiver for that one building.
About 40, 45 feet?
Well, no, if I be, if he made it unfit, that roof will usually comes up
33 feet plus the roof.
Yeah, 33 feet plus the roof.
Plus the roof.
40s.
So it'll be
About 45 to the roof line.
Yeah.
By 40.
Where an average house is 35 and we do it at the house.
The, you of the condensers up there. That's typically like the parapet, they usually bring it straight up. In this, he's, they're doing a much nicer parapet
Correct.
With the pitch roof. And then it just drops off, but it's all just open inside that.
How we got to that is we looked at doing flat roof. It's very industrial, it's very contemporary, it's more of like a Boston style. So when you do, and then what's nice is obviously putting the condensers and everything up on the roof. So we were going to do that, but then what the architect was saying is we could just take, you know, shingle and, and pull it up to block everything so you won't see it from the roof, from the, from the ground, you won't see it. It is, yeah.
Any other abutters, just to this point? Have any questions, concerns or comments? Please feel free, sir, come on up, introduce yourself.
My name's Thomas Janner, I'm at 29 Perry Place, and I have a question on, he's saying that he has the right to improve the roads. And under mass.gov, under streets, it's a section on private roads and everything I've read is that he can improve his part of the road that he owns, but everything else he, he can't do unless he, you know, he gets permission from the other people. So I'd like to know how he's going to get, he's able to do, improve the whole road.
So one of the things that we've already put as a safeguard in the conversation is that we had asked that he provide proof that he has ability to do that. And what he has here is a, from a letter, from his law office here, demonstrating why they believe they have the right to upgrade that road according to the laws of the private way. However, what we did do additionally is say that if it was not from a judge or a land court, that we would put it in the condition of the permit process. So in other words, even if we got through the permit process and we voted in favor of this, he would still be required to go to a land court and prove that they have the ability and settle the private road issue. So just because we approved this project, that does not mean the private road issue is complete along with that. And I want to make sure
Okay, I'm like, wait a second, he, everything I'm reading is that he, he, he can improve, he's part of the private road he owns, but everything else, everything I'm reading, he can't do unless he'd get permission from everybody else. So, okay, thank you.
Right, so yeah, no, we have a safeguard and, in the event it goes through, we have a safeguard in place to make sure that that is cleared up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, will, will the abutters be notified of this court date?
You'll be sued, that's how it will work. He'll either sue you or you'll sue him. That's unfortunately how it's going to work.
He's going to have to go to court and get a judgment on the road.
He gets the judgment by suing the other landowners. So every landowner on Perry Place is going to be sued saying, if you got So what will happen is he'll say, I have the right to do this, you'll tell him no, he'll sue you saying, I have the right to do this, judge tell me I have the right to do this. Or vice versa, you go to court ahead of him and say, he doesn't have the right to do this. Unfortunately, what it's going to need to come down to is a lawsuit between the developer and the residents.
Thanks.
That's just the only way to settle this legal issue. We don't have the ability to, we have two competing legal memos. As a board, we don't have the legal knowledge or ability to decide which one is valid. That's a judge's decision.
Perfect way to say it, thank you very much. And so that's why we would have it listed in the conditions of approval, to say that it would have to go and somewhere be proven. So, thank you very much for weighing in on that too.
Mr. Chairman, I
You met, yes, please.
I let that last conversation play out, but I, I think we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves and presupposing outcomes. I wanted to just ask, during the last meeting, we had denied a condition on the number of units, minimum number of units as a waiver. We had denied that waiver. So where does that denied waiver stand? And how does that align with the proposed redesign of one of his buildings?
The waiver, I think, stands and what, in theory, he'd be asking us to do is reconsider it due to the change in the
I'm, I'm, right, but let me ask the applicant that, are you asking us, that's the premise of my question, are you asking us to reconsider the denial of that waiver? Okay.
Obviously, we're reducing down what the, that building by 16 units.
And your bid, your bid to us is to, out of the entire project, to remove 16 apartments?
16 apartments, and then obviously
One floor and 16 apartments is your counter. Okay.
And then obviously, we were doing the, the donation, the sidewalk, the, you know, the pedestrian thing, so all of those things
I, I, I appreciate the goodwill, but I just, isolating on that waiver that we denied
Yes.
Your counter is, is one floor and 16 units.
Yes, and obviously, you know, I don't mean to repeat it, but the, yeah, the same thing with the, with, you know, the, the donation and all the other things, because obviously, if, if we, if we didn't get the permit from you guys, we did have to go, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be including all that, all of, you know, the other things too. So there is a little bit more to it than
I get the risk, I, I, I'll get the risk.
No, I don't mean that in a, you know, disrespectful way by any means, I just, you know
Mr. Venacasa, you've never been, you, you've certainly never been.
Thank you.
It's a, it's a challenging process on both sides.
It is.
I would, I would never accuse you of not being courteous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to, do you want to state that? I know what you're saying, but I mean, I think you need to bring that up, I think it's something we should discuss. I'd like, again, maybe I'm wrong, but I think it's, it's something that we have another member of the board here who has a lot of legal experience here and she has some concerns that we want to address and I think it's the right way to do it.
I think I just want to address the discussion about the private way that has obviously been a big discussion since we started this process. And I think the board has indicated that it's a condition that we feel like we would place if we move forward with the permit because we're not qualified to make that decision as to whether or not he has access. But I do, I think, want to state that my opinion is that that is not a condition he would face at the state. If Mr. Venacasa does not get what he needs from us and he goes to get state approval, there is no requirement that he need that proof before he pulls a building permit from this town. You, the abutters would have to sue him. That's, that is the only way that that, that issue would be resolved. I don't think, in my opinion, and I'm happy to be told I'm wrong, but I don't think that there's any way for the town to deny his building permit if he gets, if his, if he appeals our denial, if that's what happens and he goes to the state and they say yes, that building permit issues, as long as he's met the other requirements that Mr. Allard, you know, sets forth from a state perspective, but the condition of proving that he has the right to do whatever to the private road, I do not believe becomes an issue unless there is a lawsuit instituted by the abutters.
So, just so I'm clear, so the risk is if in fact we denied the permit, you, you're suggesting that he wouldn't have to show the doors in the private road access, for betterment. But if we did condition it and provide an approval?
Yes.
Then you're suggesting that he would?
Yes.
Okay.
We can, so as the board, we're using it pretty much as a shield for the residents, we're saying, yeah. And if we don't have that shield, the residents have that as the sword to attack him. So that's really, yeah, we can't get that shield without our approval.
Yeah, and I thought that's what you were articulating, but I'm, it's Thursday and I'm slow today. So I just, I just wanted to make sure I understood the risk. Thank you.
Looks like the town might have some comments or concerns in there, is, you want to chime in, please?
Good evening, I just wanted to, I know there's some discussion regarding, you know, what if and some legal discussion. Obviously, I think your discussion is a, a healthy discussion to kind of talk those things out. But if there's any legal questions, we would give those to town council to kind of work through. I just want to make sure that everybody understands, you know, this, I, I think I'm interpreting that you're talking about some possibilities, but anything legal would obviously go to our town attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, no, that, I, let's get it on the record, that's exactly what I want to do.
So I didn't, I guess I didn't see the language that they were, as far as going to court to get a judge order.
So I think when I said, can you demonstrate that you have authority over the road?
Yeah.
And you come back with a, you know, a lawyer's opinion, we have a lawyer's opinion that says, you know, from the, the abutters that say you don't.
Right.
And then you have one that says you do. That doesn't give us the authority to make an opinion here, that's a judge, realistically, to us. So I
Is there other, I, I, I don't know, I'd have to ask my attorney, but I, I don't know, is there any other, the only problem with going to a judge is it could take a long time, you know what I mean?
Well, the thing is, we don't have the ability, because there's no, there's no, to our knowledge and based on the information we receive from town council, there's no clear indications on the private road issue in the courts, is that, is that correct, my say?
I'm not sure.
No.
Right, I mean
I think we have two levels.
If it's just a deeded, if it's on the deed and has a deeded right, but would, would it be fair if I, if, if my attorney reached out to town council to have a discussion about that as well?
I mean, they certainly can, I have no issue with that, that would be something between them.
Yeah, because I don't know enough to really speak on it, but Yeah, because I don't know enough to really speak on it, but, yeah.
Negotiating as much as we can, so...
And I think the other issue the residents have raised is, when it was two separate plots, one of the plots had access explicitly through Perry Place, but the other plot only had access through the road that got cut off by 290. So I think that was another issue that the residents raised.
So, and again, I think that it's important to understand, let's be clear about this, you have a, and we're not, we're obviously not gonna settle this particular issue tonight, we know that. So we'll be clear on it, let's take our notes, and then we can move forward. But I think that, you know, again, the abutters have presented attorney's opinion that does not meet the requirements of a private road. You have one that says it does, we can't make that opinion. So it would, something that we would have to put in as a condition of, and again, but, um, we have dissenting opinions on whether or not it would stand even in the language of the permit, so. Unfortunately, the private road issue really complicates a lot of things, just in general when it comes to zoning. It's not even just with this particular project, right? Private roads are basically a nightmare, so, you know.
Would it be, would it be fair, like, again, if, if, if my attorney could talk to town council, I'd rather avoid having to go to the judge to do it, because of a timing thing, obviously.
Sure.
But is there some other way to, to make sure that, you know, we're demonstrating that we do, you know, we do have the rights? Is there any other?
I don't see the issue...
He seems very knowledgeable about the law and, and all that stuff, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, but you're on the spot.
I, I mean, it's... At least in my view, it'd either be a court judgment or a settlement. Uh, but I'm also, I'm not a lawyer yet, I just graduated law school over the weekend, so...
Oh, did you really? Congratulations!
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Vina Casa, I, I would just suggest, I think we, we may, with respect, we may be getting ahead of our skis. Although we've got three attorneys on the board that are more skilled than I in some of this language, certainly, and I don't like to admit that. But, but, but I think, I think what it comes down to succinctly is, is if, if you wanted to seek that, my humble opinion, if you were to have that, have your attorney have that conversation with, with the town's attorney? Again, the, the, the challenge is, is that we've got two opinions before us. We're not in a position where we can adjudicate and pick a side on that particular issue. So that's our scope.
Right.
And for that, for that matter, I don't, I don't necessarily know that the town attorney could offer you, he could offer you a third opinion, quite frankly. Um, because he didn't author the opposing opinion of what, of what you've put before us. And so respectfully, I, I, I don't know. We're, we're supposing that it may have to go in the direction of a judiciary because you've got different opinions. But I do know from having many friends that are attorneys, is that second year or third year? Where they bring the attorneys in and ask them to pick an opposing side that they believe in and then argue it all semester? Right, which is basically teaching them to lie? So, so, skilled, very skilled, right? But very skilled.
Liar's.
So respectfully, I, I think we're, we're getting ahead of, we, we, we would not be in a position to be able to offer that kind of advice.
Yeah, no, I think I was a fair statement, yeah, I, I, I agree with it. I, I, I just asked if, you know, I guess I would just ask if they could just have a conversation. I don't, I don't know enough to really speak on it, maybe.
Yes, sir. Name for the record, please?
Paul Dockry, 32 Perry Place. I'd like to see it go in front of a judge, because like you said, we got two lawyers that say different right now, and I don't play one on TV, so. Uh, I'd like to see that happen, go in front of a judge.
Right.
All right?
Okay, thank you. So again, I don't think we're gonna resolve this issue tonight. This is something that is ongoing. Um, we've discussed it in the past, it's not something that we can conclude this meeting on, really, so we're just gonna move on. I think the best thing to do is understand it, let's take some notes, and let's move on to the next...
Yep, I agree.
You okay with that?
Personally, I'd like to see that the road's solved before we even take a vote.
Okay.
I mean, why go through Gwyneth until we decide what the road is, uh, issue is?
So we should pause this for two or three years, then, that, just because it, to solve the road, it is gonna need to go to a court. That's unfortunately what it's gonna be, so.
So be it, I mean, that's the way I'd look at it.
We can't force them to go to the court?
Excuse me?
We can just say...
Um, Ms. Bush, do you have a mic? Is there actually even a mic there? I don't think there is.
Oh, there is.
Oh, there is, okay, just a little thing.
No thingy, no thingy thing. No, I mean, we can't obviously force them to litigate the road issue, so I think what Meghan said before is the decision's either approved or it's denied, and if it's denied, they can appeal it. If it's approved, we can condition it on, um, the road issue being solved prior to a building permit being issued.
So those are our steps, pretty much.
Yeah. From the, you know, the building standpoint, if it doesn't have an actual address that's available in town, we wouldn't be able to issue a building permit. So that would have to be resolved before, but, you know, I could issue a building permit.
Okay, good to know. Um, so what we have, let's, let's do this. So I also have another, uh, wrench to throw in the works this evening. And, um, we actually spoke with our consultant today, too. We got a 4:30 phone call with our 40B consultant today. And one of the concerns that she had mentioned is that, um, I'm, I'm gonna read what she suggested and then move forward from there. So the motion, should we have any issues this evening, is because we don't have a final set of plans. In other words, if everything is agreed to upon this evening, uh, in terms of the roof height, the number of apartments, et cetera, et cetera, they would have to come back with a freshly drawn set of plans to submit, okay? So, this would, what the motion would be, based on our consultant, it says the ZBA votes to continue the public hearing till the next ZBA meeting, which would be June 26th, 2025, subject to the applicant's providing written consent to extend the hearing past the 180-day deadline, and that the applicant will provide the final plan of record showing all plan revisions agreed to since the opening of the public hearing, at least one week before the June 26th, 2025 meeting, and there would be no further public testimony taken at the June 26th meeting. So this would be the final opportunity for you all to do public comments. Should the applicant agree to extend to June, which is required, that's his prerogative as an applicant, because we've already passed the 180-day deadline, should he choose to do that, in June, they would come back with a final set of plans, all drawn up, nice and neat, and the board would vote at that time. So that's the likely scenario of what will probably take place this evening. So, Mr. Loggins, go ahead, sir.
Mr. Chair, I, I understand your point with that, but if he's gonna change plans and come back with a whole final set, we can't comment on the new version?
Well, that's what we're doing this evening. You're talking, you're commenting on the last version.
So if he's, if he's coming back on the very last version, is that this evening?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, this is, this is, yeah, I probably should have said that. This is it, whatever he's gonna propose this evening is gonna go into the final set of plans, and then, because our consultant recommended, because without having a final set of plans, we would not be doing our due diligence, and also would be advisable to the board members that would give us opportunity to go over everything one more time to make sure it is accurate.
Well, he, he's already talked about that he has to consult his lawyer and the engineer on certain things for the end of Perry Street, so how can we do a, a final plan if he's got a consultant's lawyer?
We're not talking about the street, we're talking about the complex. We're talking about the sixteen apartments that he's willing to take off, so you have view changes. So we're talking about the roof line, we're talking about the different individual items that he's willing to change in terms of safety being put on there, all those things. We're not discussing Perry Place right now because we know there's a legal issue beyond the scope of this board. So just so you understand, so that's what we're dealing with this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, to the applicant, I, I think if you see where we are in terms of making sure that everything is, the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, one more time. And if you would be willing to do that, to the June 26th meeting, we would have everything put on paper that we finished discussing tonight. Everything would be wrapped up, public comment would not take place, this would be the last opportunity for that. And then we would come in, do a final review, present to the board, and do a vote on June 26th, if that would be okay to you.
Yes, that is.
All right, so we have the agreement from the applicant verbally, they will need them to sign that. Um, but that would be the, the issue. So we can move forward, now that we have the dates and times, everybody knows what's going on. We can move forward with the rest of your proposals. Let's just read them out and say, this is what's going in. We'll give the abutters the last opportunity to discuss, and then we can convene next month. Does that work for you?
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay.
That's fair.
So we discussed the roof line, we discussed the change of sixteen, the dropping of sixteen units, which would be the question of the waiver, right?
Yep.
Okay.
So that gets addressed at the next meeting, once we see the final plans. If he is asking us to reconsider the waiver, it would be done at the next meeting, once he has his new set of plans.
Correct.
Okay.
Just, just to add to, um, the set of plans would just be the architecuals, obviously, the footprints, drainage, everything would stay the same. So the site plans, the full set that Graves and, and everybody, they all reviewed, nothing, nothing would change on that, it's just gonna be the architectural.
The only thing what we were really requesting is that we have this properly documented. If they, we would not require you to come in with another 25 pages of, you know, all this stuff, yeah. Just make sure that it's properly documented, that these are the modifications and changes that we've requested and agreed to. And then they can overlay the original plan set, if you will.
Perfect.
Right, okay. Um, so we have the roof line change, the dropping of sixteen units, we have a substantial number of safety, um, items being put into the traffic area, and then where were the, do we want to...
Then, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't the parking change since the original plan to, or am I wrong about that? We changed the, you changed the amount of spots or the size of the spots, or something changed with that?
Yes, we, we made them deeper, so originally, we made them, they were a little bit shallower, and then we, we did, we pushed the buildings back, um, a little bit more to, to make, I wanna say we went from like sixteen to nineteen, or, I forget the exact numbers, but yes, you are correct. We did, we did make them deeper on one of the revisions, it was the one in the, earlier in the process.
Okay, we've already seen the plan with the...
Yes, and it's already been reviewed by Graves and...
I was just thinking of anything else that we've changed that we can have on the final plans, okay.
As far as civil, um, everything has been, has been reviewed, and we have a clean bill of health as far as civil traffic, like, all that stuff has all been reviewed and peer reviewed and...
And you know, also, while I'm thinking of this on the town side, could I just ask, request a note? You don't even have to get up, that's okay. Just, um, can we run the theory behind the town attorney, or pass the town attorney, that, um, whether or not we put the condition of Perry Place in the final, um, application packet? But in other words, if, if we put it in there as a condition that says they have to go to the land court and, or, or they have to find a legal process to prove that they have ownership of the road or control of the road, is that legally binding in that agreement? Because I think we have a dissent, you know, they're saying it is, some saying it's not. I'd like to make sure that if we put it in there as a condition, that that condition can legally stand.
Um, for that question, um, we will have the, um, uh, so the, the draft comprehensive permit, the certificate of decision, that draft will go to, uh, town attorney, just to make sure everything that we have in there is, is properly written.
Got it.
But it's my understanding that we already had in there that, um, as part of the decision, uh, the applicant would have to, um, provide, um, something legal in nature that shows that he has, um, has control of the road. I, I don't know if that's the exact wording of it, but...
It actually is pretty close, yep.
Yeah, so if there is something in question, um, I'm sorry, I have not seen, um, that latest letter, um, but, um, we would send those to town council if there's any concerns. We certainly can relay those back to the board and to the applicant, but...
With respect, though, that's what this is. Right. I mean, that, that's what he's done. He, he's, he's, he's provided a legal position that says that he has access to it. So that's not what we're asking in the, that's not what we're proposing in the condition. What we're proposing in the condition is not that he provides that he has access, but that there's actually a true and, and, and binding justification of whether or not he does. Because there are different opinions to this now.
I, I understand, I, I apologize, I have not seen that.
I understand, not, not meaning to put you on the spot, but my challenge is to put that in front of the town attorney and suggest that our condition would just speak to, he's providing legal proof that he has access to make modifications or betterments to that road, that's what he's done, in this letter. That's his legal proof, that's his position.
I, I think the question to Attorney Hennigan is, can we condition that he provide legal proof from a court that he has not? Can we put that in? Right, can we actually add that?
Some type of, some type of... That's what I'm looking for. And I'll tell you, especially why, because I understand with 40B, again, this changes a little bit, and I'll tell you why. You can only condition things with 40B projects that have been conditioned with other 40B projects. So you can't, we can't just put a condition on a project because it is a 40B project, if you will. So making sure that we can actually add this legally is a step that I wanna make sure, or that it would actually stand. That's what I really wanna know. If we're gonna put, if we're gonna put this in as a condition to protect the abutters, will that stand legally to make it binding? That's what I care about.
I think that's a fair point, Mr. Chairman, but respectfully, whether it's a 40B or not, if an application came before us in such a manner, I would, I would want that proof as well.
Correct.
And so I think, so I, I think ideally before we vote, but I think we've timed out on that.
We have timed out on that.
So, so I, as, as Ms. Roach, we got till the 26th.
Can we include the condition on an approval? And I think if we're going to June 26th and Mr. Vina Casa has, has, uh, agreed to that, that gives time for Attorney Hennigan and, uh, Attorney St. Pierre to have conversations if that, if that dictates a necessity.
Great, and maybe it's not necessary, because I understand Mr. Vina Casa is doing everything he can to find an option to stay out of court, um, for that.
And he always says, that's...
For that topic, and I, and I don't, and I don't, I don't disparage the approach. Uh, but I think the condition, our, we would, exactly what Ms. Roach had said, is that I think the language in there to suggest that a judge weigh into these two differing opinions and provide, um, I guess, provide a judgment for it is, is our position.
Just one comment I would make to that, um, I'd say a legally binding determination, either from a judge or if somehow he gets a settlement from the neighbors, that should also be included. If somehow, I doubt the neighbors are gonna settle, but we, we shouldn't close the door to allowing a settlement between them by saying they have to get a land court determination.
Sure, that, so understand just that the legalese, we need to make sure that we leave it open, I like that.
That's why they're here, yeah.
Correct, and I love that, I think, we have great knowledge here.
Because we can throw it up and they can wordsmith it.
Well, I think, yeah, we have to ask Attorney Hennigan, what is his suggestion? Can we, can we not? That's something that he has to decide.
Because I guess that's the only thing that confuses me, is I'm like, basically what they're saying is, you know, obviously, we would feel like we have it, they feel like that we don't.
Right.
And you guys are saying, go sue each other. So it's like, it feels like, so like...
We're saying that somebody has to provide ownership, somebody's gonna show that the matter is resolved. So again, if...
But whether you can get that, achieve that, and I, I, I understand the, you know, the concept of wanting to achieve that, and we, we would too, obviously, we're gonna be investing a lot of money over there. But is there any other avenue other than going to a judge to do that? And I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, and that's where I would ask Jason to reach out to Hennigan and say, you know, is there anything else that, that could be done other than a judge, right? Because, like, you know, to your point, we always wanna stay out of court, no matter whether we're 100% right or 100% wrong, we wanna stay out of court.
Respectfully, and there may be, there may be another avenue, and, and, and I don't know. I mean, because I'll, because I'll just politely say, you know, remember, a judge is just an attorney, right?
Correct.
With a different title and more authority.
Yes.
So, so there may be another pathway, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that either, so that's what I would ask Jason to...
And again, this is what we're, I wanna understand everybody, too. This is what we're hashing out, because we're gonna come back with the final draft for the next meeting. So understand what we're working through this evening, please, okay? So, um, go ahead, Mr. Loggins, sir.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, um, I, I would highly recommend that you seek out a housing attorney for this question and not a general practice attorney, somebody who is specialized in the housing. I mean, we have three attorneys sitting on the board, congratulations, by the way. Um, we have three attorneys sitting on the board, and like you said, every attorney's gonna interpret things different. Um, but I think a specialty, a housing specialty attorney might give you better information than a general practice attorney.
Well, I don't think I have the ability to go pick and choose. We have a town attorney, and that's it.
Yeah, I think respectfully, Attorney Hennigan is the town attorney, that's who will consult. I think you need a land use attorney is probably what you need, and if you wanna retain one, knock yourself...
No, no, I'm, I'm saying you're, you're asking, wanna forward things to the town attorney.
That's who we have to consult.
Yeah, and I, I think he's qualified to make a opinion on that, I think he's had enough experience in this area where he's probably dealt with a few private roads in the past in his career. He's not just Auburn's attorney, by the way, he probably represents several other towns as well. I'm sure he's probably come across this matter in the past. So I'm, I'm very confident in Attorney Hennigan's ability to sort through this.
There's a couple land court cases that pretty much present this exact situation. Uh, and I can't remember their names, I can't remember their outcomes, but I did read them back in October when this began.
Okay, so, yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Um, I, I'm sorry, I had to step out a couple of times, I don't know, did you actually take a vote to extend, um, oh, okay, I just wanted to...
The applicant has agreed to it.
He has.
I haven't read the mo, I read the motion so everybody would know what it was.
Okay.
I didn't officially read the motion or, or officially ask for a vote on it yet.
No problem, I just wanted to make sure that that is, um, clear if we are going to do that, because we do have a deadline, unless, um, Mr. Vina Casa agrees to continue.
Right, he did agree to continue, he would sign the paper, we just haven't made it official yet.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Yes, sir, come on up.
Thomas Downe, 29 Perry Place, is, how can we get a copy of that letter from the, from his lawyer?
Not a problem, you can have that. All documents of public knowledge. All right, thank you. There you go. Ask and you shall receive. Um, okay, so is there anything that we have not covered in terms of the agreements, uh, Mr. Vina Casa? No, that's okay, I know, we're going back and forth with stuff. Is there anything on the punch list that was discussed in the meeting in terms of safety equipment, roof, and numbers of units, that we miss anything?
There was nothing new, so we did, we had all the safety equipment that, um, the fire department wanted, there was a standpipe. Um, in the common areas, they wanted carbon and smoke detectors. There was, there was some stuff, there was other things in there, but they were previously agreed on and nothing changed. I think the, the bigger ones were the ones that we discussed. Um, there was the, there was the bike, the bike storage, um, this is adequate, covered...
So for the record, that's a good one to talk about, they wanted outdoor bike storage. And I did not realize that that's not a trend anymore. Indoor bike storage is the right way to do it, and apparently, our applicants, uh, have a passion for bicycling. So they build a separate room that people can, because e-bikes are no thing too, right? Everybody has these electric bikes with these batteries that are dangerous or could potentially. So they have a separate room for bicycles now that they build in the buildings. potentially. So they have a separate room for bicycles now that they build in the buildings. Am I correct to say that?
You're absolutely correct. So we in one of our one of our properties, when we first started, we did the bike storage outside and we found that people kind of left like not desirable bikes and everything outside, the ones that they didn't really care about. And it became a nuisance where if you're making them, everybody bring it inside. They're typically a better bike. They're typically going to take care of it and it's not going to be not great looking in the community. So we've been doing the bike storage inside and to your point, obviously, we have e-bikes now and bikes are, you know, can be very expensive, so there is indoor storage for the bikes. And yes, my my uncle is a big biker, so have to listen to it.
I thought that was a very nice point, especially e-bikes now are in the thousands. You know, when you're talking about those batteries, you know, it's crazy. So that's another nice go ahead, sir.
I have one question for the applicant. So by reducing the number of units, are you also going to reduce the number of parking spaces or just going to keep it the same?
I'm going to keep them the same just for an overflow. The one thing that we're going back and forth on right now is whether we would put an elevator in that building typically on a three-story building, you don't elevate those. And honestly, I'm going to rely on my on on our marketing team to look at it and say, you know, the the value, because obviously they're very expensive and usually with three stories you don't. The only thing is is it is it is a bigger enough footprint where I'm kind of borderline where I could justify it. So it's really going to come back to your performer with the numbers as far as whether we're going to elevate that building or not. It's nice with the elevator because you get, you know, the seniors and people with disabilities and all that stuff. So it kind of in 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 a lot of our communities, we have a lot of older people that are selling their houses and, you know, want to come here and then travel. So we that's a big market for us. And then I believe in the discussion too, you're saying that that Auburn itself has an older demographic too that's that is in need for it. So I think as long as she tells me that we can, the numbers would support it, we would probably still do the elevator, but the four-story for sure would have an elevator. And then the 24-unit building would not, that won't support an elevator. And the question is is whether the other one would or not, and that's just be performer based.
Actually, I do have a question now. Do you know of those 16 units that would be reduced in that building? What are those one bedrooms to like? Do you know what those?
The margin would have to would stay the same. So with the 40Bs, you have to have a 10% of the of three bedroom. So we do. Yeah, it's 10%, 45% ones, and then 35% twos.
Okay, so adjusted to make sure you're still meeting.
Yeah, you still have to meet the requirements of the 40B process. Yes, yeah. And then there's, you know, handicap A, B, that they have to they have to architect works all that out and yeah. So the the ratios will all still work.
I'm going to go back around now that you've heard all this other stuff. So I think that's pretty much all of them. There was a discussion on the $100,000. Did we ever resolve that or not? Is that something that we can sweeten the pot on again or no?
Yeah, I mean, it's it was it was in there. We said, you know, if we were going to get if we were get support from the from the board, we would do that. I think the only thing that I didn't see in there is that we said that because initially it was tied to like the first year, second year, third year, I think when we were with when we were with the select board. But you guys brought up a good point of like tying it to something. So then we I think that, you know, possibly doing a third, a third, a third at the occupancy of each building. Yeah.
And that's what we did with the existing project that's happening right now, and it worked out pretty well. That was Athens Street, I believe. Right? Correct?
Yeah.
Just want to make sure I'm saying the right one.
The one up in the hill there.
Albert Street, Albert Street, excuse me, not Athens. We haven't gotten there yet. Put the cart before the horse. Albert Street is what they did with that one, and it worked out pretty well. So if that could be something that we could happen. So again, I honestly, folks, I think that I'm just putting it out there that again, 40B is not something that's palatable to the town or some some of the town. But I think that the applicant has really done their due diligence and trying to accommodate as much as they possibly can here. And I think in the interest of fairness, this really should be considered before this decisions are made. So I just wanted to put that out there. I think you've done a very good job of answering all the questions, accommodating all the issues, being very fair and open about this whole process, regardless of how people feel about it. Again, you know, I've always said it's it's the process that we don't like. It's not the applicant, but I think you've done a very good job.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Largis, go ahead, sir.
Again, Mr. Chair, he keeps saying he has the consultant with the elevators, consult with this. I thought tonight's the final line, so it's either yes or no.
That's correct.
So when is he going to have the time to consult with?
Well, because he doesn't know this because we haven't decided if we don't go through with this particular part of the plan, he's going to go back to the four-story buildings and those are all going to have elevators in them. So we're by reducing this building this evening for the benefit of the abutters, he needs to just make sure that a consultant can say, yes, you can or no, you can't have an elevator. Is it economically feasible for him to do that? And it's only one elevator because it's reducing the height of one building.
Right, so just make things perfectly clear because
Sure.
we're at 10 feet off the property line.
Yep.
Correct? Okay. We're still doing a fence line between the neighbors.
We are, and actually, we discussed that specifically. As a matter of fact, I would like to go over that. Yep, in a minute.
We're discussing that future here. Okay.
No, we did actually, and that was something that we haven't. I'm glad you brought it up because that was something that we haven't discussed. But believe me when I tell you, there was ample discussion on the ability to block correctly. As a matter of fact, you're going to laugh, but you know what I said we could probably do? We just get Mr. Largis to put up a sign that says bull in the field, and I'm sure nobody would want to go over there.
Just make sure they can run quicker than the bull. Well, in that sense, so we're looking at plastic or wooden fence and the arbovites as well.
Discuss this for you.
12-foot arbovites. So so when you when you go to our communities, we what we try to do is where we can we try and do a natural landscape. So the architect, the the landscape plan that that was was submitted does show, and I can give you a copy too, but it does show a lot of of trees that go over there. We try not to do a fence, especially a white vinyl fence. We're always at least trying to do like a wood fence. It's a little bit more of a natural look. And then especially with landscaping around it. Ideally, we like to have as much natural landscape as we can rather than a fence that feels a little bit more like barrack-like. But we do have, I believe, there will be some sections with fence. And then you have the garages, which also go towards the neighbors, which is obviously the.
Right, so it's the backside of that.
So you'll get the backside of that. So obviously, that's, I mean, much better than a fence and higher than a fence. But there is there is a lot of, we did a lot of screening on the sides.
I'd rather see a fence than the back of a building.
Well, I think the back of the building is going to look like a is.
It'll look it'll look better than a fence.
It'd look better someplace else, but we're not arguing that.
Mr. Venakasa, how how high are these proposed fences?
Let let me look and see exactly what. Sorry.
I believe the original, when he was talking with the selectmen, we we were doing 12-foot arbovites with the wood, the fence as well. Because.
Yeah, so what it is is. So in this section, there's actually both arbovites and fence to block off Mr. Largis. Obviously, behind here, you have you have this, but then there's a row of there's arbovites that come across this open area that comes here and then all the way down and then across the whole thing to screen the neighbors. So this is the this is the landscape plan. I can print out.
These are the giant.
That's the ones that that those that's what was proposed, and that's what's in the packet.
Okay, so there's going to be no, there's going to be no other fence with the arbovites?
No, not along here. So these are larger trees and you have like, you know, all landscaping in here, landscaping across here, fence in this area, and then just trees all in here.
Where you have fencing, is it a proposed six-foot fence? Is it a 10-foot fence?
It'd either be a six or an eight. Eight's pretty tall, though. I think typically they do about six.
Unless you get a permit from the town, you can do eight.
I I don't have. I don't. Yeah, I mean, either way, if you guys want an eight-foot fence, it doesn't make a difference to us.
Correct. So we.
We don't we don't limit it at eight either, so.
Right.
I don't think it specifies it. This is all just all the species of of plantings.
And there was another on the original plans. And I, Jesus, I can't even see this. We discussed dumpsters on the east side of the properties, so they weren't near our property lines.
Yeah. So what we've been doing.
And we only have one.
Yeah. So we only we only do do one dumpster. We do the compact dumpsters. I can get you. I can send you the spreadsheet of it. We just did it for another town to show that it'll handle everything.
Right.
We try not to have dumpsters everywhere. They're they're it's it's what's recommended by the dumpster companies as well. And it's shocking how much it actually compacts and how much that it will handle. So it's not because of the other, the other one we have is like 268 units and we only have one compactor and the town was concerned that it wasn't going to be adequate. But it was he was even coming like once a week and a half or something.
I've I've had I've worked in employed areas where they've had those and you'd be very surprised how much material can fit in a compacting dumpster. That's not going to be a problem. And they can change it three times a week if they need to. All they do is pull in, take one out, put one in, go. So they could they could change it multiple times a week if it's necessary.
It is. It's crazy. When we when I saw the volume numbers come across, it was shocking.
Yeah, it's pretty. They're pretty efficient.
I thought there was three on the original plan. That's why I was asking. And it is going to be on the east side. Okay. And we are doing fence and arbovites for Mr. Daughery's property.
So that's there's arbovites all. There's arbovites implanted. I don't say just arbovites. There are probably a different, a bunch of different species that he'll put in there, the landscape architect, so that it's not like a straight row. But it'll be some kind of evergreen that would that would give some screening that comes across here.
The giant arbovites grow 12 feet. And once you plant them close together, then it's it's going to be a wall.
Look at us working together, huh? See this? It's nice.
Mr. Chairman, maybe we can.
If you say so.
Yeah, so I I think that we've we've covered the fact that they want to make sure there's going to be an adequate screening between the two properties. So I'm confident that can be that can be remedied. Do we have another abutter that would like to speak? Yes, sir. If you could give us your name and address.
David Engstrom, 39 Perry Place. A question about the dumpsters. How often are they being emptied? And I know typically with those dumpsters, when they release them, they leave a pile of trash and it ends up getting blown all over the place. So what's the take care of that?
So you thought through the chair. I don't know exactly. I think when we looked at the numbers, we didn't look at specifically for this project. It was another project that was it's 268 units that we have over there, and I believe it was like week and a half. The numbers were and it was, to your point, it was shocking how much that those those things handle.
Right.
As far as if there was trash or anything, we do have a maintenance, we would have maintenance people that are going to be over there. It's large enough that there would be a staff member that would constantly and and I'd welcome you to come to any of our projects. We were meticulous about.
Did know if you guys have a full-time staff or if.
Yeah, they would. They would be.
Maintenance crew come every week or something.
Yeah, yeah, no, there would. There'll be someone pretty much on on staff, whether he's there, there, you know, 40 hours, but between all of our projects, they're always going around.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just.
You may.
So you said you have project 260-ish units and it's a week and a half, so every 10 days. We're looking at a development that's about half that size. So is it safe to assume it's like every two to three weeks you'll be?
I would I would assume so, and I don't know whether he'll they'll size that because we give we give the the project to the dumpster company and they'll size it. So maybe that one's going to be a little bit bigger and it would still be a week and a half than than this one, but my guess is in that in in that range.
Yeah, I was just really just putting the math together for myself, Doug.
Okay, so I feel like we're at the 11th hour of this project and dumpsters should have been covered a long time ago anyway. So I think we've adequately, I think we've adequately worried about all the different little individual things. Last call, Mr. Largis. Believe me when I tell you it's last call.
I was just talking to Mr. Daughery. Just want to clear one thing up. So you're not going to put fences behind the garages? Behind the garages facing our properties?
No, we wouldn't propose a fence behind a garage. It's kind of.
On on your part, but what about our part?
Well, there's 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 plantings behind it, but I mean, why? I don't I don't know if it's makes sense to put a fence right next to a, you know, garage. It's a wall.
Is it going to be? Is it going to be the 12-foot giant arbovites then?
We can. There would be some some plantings going across it. Did you take that?
Is it going to be the 12-foot arbovites or is it going to be?
I don't. Do you? Do you have the plan? There's some kind of there. I'm sure there's some kind of probably some kind of evergreen. I don't want to say a 12-foot arbovite either. So there's arbovites between and then from here over. So no, right behind Mr. Daughery, there's it doesn't show any arbovites that would go right behind.
And those are still 10 feet off the property line.
Yeah, roughly. Yeah. I mean, 10 feet, if you put a tree up, by the time you get the roof, I don't really know how much room you're going to have to have a tree grow up around it.
Arbovites, they're not that.
Who said 12 feet?
They're 12 feet high. I. When you plant.
We don't. We don't show any there right now?
When you plant them close together, they don't get wide.
Okay, so when they're planted close together, they don't get wide? So it's.
Well, again, I think we're you're spending time here worrying about the size of a screen. We're going to get it in there. We're going to make sure it's adequately covered for you, whether it's an arbovite or if it's a giant redwood, I think is irrelevant at this point.
Blue spruce is going to get 60 something feet tall. Well, we're down to the 11th hour. We want answers, not, you know.
So they have concerns about screening, obviously. So we need to make sure that we have adequate.
That's something that we could.
Does anybody want to comment on screening?
When he presents his final plan.
Right.
Listen to what they're saying and.
Yep.
Add it to the final plan.
Yep. Correct.
And what they're saying, you can add it to your final plan.
Okay, yep, that's fair.
Okay. So anything else? I just want to make sure. Yes, sir. If you could.
Probably don't need the, Mark Lindblum, One Eames Drive?
Yes, sir.
So again, my questions as being in a butter towards the evil 40B project on Albert Street.
Yes, sir.
Um, again, we got screwed over by the so-called plantings, which were, again, same thing. All of this stuff, 10, 12-foot, you know, through arborvitae, we ended up with four, you know, five footers max. Still going over with that. Crap tons of trash this past winter time all over our properties. We've had those guys up there multiple times picking up trash. It's a continuous.
Can I just ask what kind of, what do you mean trash? What kind of trash? We're talking construction debris?
Construction debris, the main construction debris that we're getting all over our property and still in our trees. And I have tons of videos, and I'm trying to work with them and not involve you guys. Um, is all of the vinyl, a, a, all of the, the starter strips for the, for the roofing. Just that stuff is everywhere in, in our property lines. We've, we've had them walk it multiple times and tons of it's in our trees and the other abutters. So again, your plan's not showing, your plan shows it on some of them, but it doesn't show it on the other ones. I'd be pissed if I had to be looking out and see a garage and not, you know, full, and not trees planted properly. I'm working with them specifically to try to do a staggered one, so I don't have to wait until I'm dead, until they actually fill in and I don't see it. Grant that you got 10 feet, but that's how you're building it. Have it set up so they can be staggered, and it's amazing. When you put them in at a certain size, again, Danny's going to be dead by the time they, the, the limbs actually touch. Or if you put them too close together, they're going to die out. Secondly is, we just had, uh, had them come through and now they're changing, uh, they're putting light shields. Cause the amount of, um, light, uh.
Ambient light.
Ambient light is, is amazing up there. It's just, it's crazy because all their big lights that they put up. So we've been going over them and I'm actually having one of their managers coming over like, you know, every couple of weeks to, to try to see. And again, he said the same thing, yeah, you've got all kinds of lights. Cause on the back of all the garages, with all their lights, they didn't have shields. So now they're putting down 12-inch shields. So the light goes down and not into the properties of, of, of the, uh, the neighbors, the, the 17 neighbors that are over there. Plus they've been coming over to adjust all their lights, uh, in the parking lot, same thing. They put them all up and they shine them up and they all come into our properties. So, but again, not this, not this particular project, but things for neighbors to look out for.
Sure.
Thank you, have a great.
No, I appreciate that input. Thank you very much, Mr. Lindblum.
Mr. Chair, that was my next question, so this gentleman can answer.
Okay.
We do have lighting plan.
I'm sorry?
We do have a lighting plan as well.
Right, we do have a lighting plan, I understand that. And also what I would like to recommend, or at least point out for the record, that, um, lighting plan has definitely been considered through this project. We've always considered those, uh, especially like we're talking like the dealerships on Route 20, the automotive dealerships. You know, we don't like light projecting on other people's properties. It is a nuisance, so we definitely recognize that. Anything else? Does anyone feel like I've missed anything? Just want to make sure because I know I'm trying to juggle this up here and I'm certainly capable of my own mistakes.
Not for tonight, Mr. Chairman, but I did have an open question on, I, I think what's forthcoming is an ex, it's an extension motion, um, for the next meeting. Um, why? Because I wasn't there respectfully. Why, why, why was it advised that, um, we have a, um, a non-public portion of the, of the meeting when we extend next month?
Townside, you want to discuss that? Why would we close the public portion of the hearing for this? Uh, what is the consultant recommended?
Um, I think the, um, uh, intent from the, um, consultant, um, was that you are at the end of the, um, the time. So you are at the deadline. Um, the applicant is willing to extend, um, but also showing just the items that are going to be, um, offered tonight. So, um, showing the reduction of one floor, um, and in any of the other items that you're talking about. So really that meeting is solely for the Porsche, solely for the purpose of showing any changes to the plan. Um, so right now, if you were to, um, uh, approve the plan, none of those are included. So these are actually positive changes to, um, the requests that have been discussed by the board and the, um, abutters. So that would be the, the sole purpose of extending this hearing would be to collect those plan revisions. And I think that is reflected in that motion, um, which the applicant did, uh, help with.
So I think, I agree, and I think what they're saying is that, what were the recommendation from the consultant was? Have them complete their application, make sure that all of the plans are updated properly before the final submission. Then the board has the opportunity over a month also to reflect on all of these changes, different things like that. So we're not rushing to a judgment this evening. Uh, and again, it was, it was designed intentionally to, uh, make sure that we do our due diligence and protect the town. So that was really the whole purpose of that. So then, but the, ending the public portion of the hearing this evening is because there'll be no further discussion on any plan changes for next month. We're not, even if they come up and say, we want this particular plant or that particular plant, all those discussions are closed as of this evening. So that would be the reason for that. Okay. Uh, is there anything else that you'd like to be addressing here this evening? Hearing none, seeing none? Last call, Mr. Largest, go ahead. What else? What do you want now? Light bulbs? Are we going to try to import?
So, so everything, everything we discussed tonight, Mr. Chair, is going to be placed in, in the final plan.
Correct.
So. Arborvitae, uh, fencing.
Safety.
The safety, so everything will be in the final plan. So when you get it, there is nothing that's going to be changed between now and the 26th?
26th, correct. And the reason being is again, because we're going to, this is the final plan, there's no more, they're going to go over it and they're going to vote on it. That's it.
Etched in stone, and then we're going to court to figure out the road.
Well, I'm not going to speculate on that part of it. That's not for me, but that could be for you.
Okay.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Any other, other abutters or applicants present? Anyone else interested in having a conversation regarding this particular hearing this evening? Okay, hearing none, seeing none?
Chairman, not, not seeing any additional comments. I'm going to make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
So, um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to read this motion if I could please, and then we'll do a second on that. We'll go from there, is that okay?
Well, that, there are two motions, right? We're closing the public portion of the hearing and then we're, we're granting an extension.
Hang on a second. No.
No, the, um, the motion that is, um, written, um, uh, addresses the extension of the hearing. And it also identifies, um, the, uh, not taking any more public testimony, I think.
Right, so we're not closing the public portion of the hearing until we do just before the vote.
Because the applicant is still part of the public portion of the hearing.
Correct, because he still has input to put, you know, he'll, we'll go over the plans one final time, ensure that everything was put in full place, and then we'll close the public portion of the hearing.
You've got me.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So what I would like to, yes, ma'am.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Yeah, correct. And just for the record again, it's going to be Mr. Cussy, Vice Chair Maron, myself, and Mr. Garabedian. Those are the four votes, okay? So.
I'll withdraw my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The motion is.
Uh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Um, I'm not, uh, just, uh, questioning, um, is the, um, motion have to be, have to come from one of the members? Not.
No, I can, I can read it as a chair.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I can read it and then somebody else can make the motion. So the motion is, the ZBA, zoning board of appeals, votes to continue the public hearing for the next ZBA meeting, which will be June 26, 2025. Subject to the applicant providing written consent to extend the hearing past 180-day deadline, which he did. And the applicant will provide the final plan of record, which we discussed this evening. Showing all plan revisions agreed to since the opening of the public hearing. At least one week before the June 26, 2025 meeting, they have to be submitted, and there'll be no further public testimony taken at the June 26 meeting. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion as articulately stated.
Do I have a second? All in favor, Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Cussy? Mr. Garabedian?
I'd approve, but I, I wanted to amend the motion, my apologies.
That's okay, what is it?
I wanted to amend at least one week before, to be clear, uh, to be by the close of business on June 15th because, or I messed that math, I did that math up. By the close of business on June 18th, because the week before is a holiday.
Ha. I would accept that amended motion as stated, so it would be, have revised plans completed and submitted by close of business on June 18th.
Just making it more clear that it's not submitted on holiday.
I'm glad you pay attention to the holidays because it's come back to bite us a couple of times, honestly. Okay, so do I have a second on that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion amendment.
All right, so, uh, Vice Chair Maron?
I approve.
Mr. Cussy?
Prove.
Ms. Bush? You can vote on this because you're approving to continue, but we're not voting on the final. Thank you. Mr. Garabedian, just for the record?
I approve.
Okay, and Ms. Roach for the record? Again, this is just a continuation.
Yep.
And then I vote to the conclusion. So we will see you all on, haha, June 25th at, I'm assuming 6th. Thank you, 26th at 6:00 PM. And then this will be the final hearing on this matter. Thank you all. So again, this meeting is not adjourned, this hearing is not closed, it is continued until the June meeting. Another challenging one to get through. Thank you.
Do we have minutes?
We do have some minutes, yep. I have some new.
I didn't vote on any of these.
None, okay, let's check it out.
It certainly is.
Primary members.
Okay, so we're going to go on to new business while we're doing here. We have, um, the minutes from March 20th, 2025. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes as submitted?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for March 20th, 2025 as written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none? Okay, so on to new business. Oh, signing, thank you. Um, while we're discussing, I love that pen, by the way.
That's the one I like that.
Yeah. One of the issues we had with, um, I'm going to let them clear, sorry. We'll let them clear first. So I got a total of three. There we go.
I think all the primary members have a total of three, so me and Ms. Bush don't need to sign anything.
Okay. So, um, one of the issues we had, oh, they're still going, okay.
You have three?
There was a total of three in there, yes.
I didn't vote on this one.
Yeah, I don't think we voted on any of them, Kate.
Yeah, I don't have much more to discuss, but I'd like to wrap it up, so.
Yeah, I gotta just remember.
Thank you.
So that instead of a week before, it's.
Yeah, it's a great idea, sure.
I just didn't want to get it like noon on the 19th and, yeah.
So the only thing I have left for this evening is, um, there was a discussion.
I'm sorry.
I don't know, I just.
Okay, so anyway, what I was, Tom, can we give us that please? Um, so the one thing we have to discuss here this evening is, um, attendance. So, um, it's really not that important per se if we miss individual hearings over the course of a year because they're all, you know, one-month meetings or two-month meetings. But what we didn't realize, it came into something that, that really kind of came back to haunt us, was that, uh, over a 10- or 11-month period, we're down to only four people voting. So at least for the future with these 40B hearings, we're asking to make sure that everybody do his best as they can with attendance. And we know, believe me, everybody's got their own lives and own businesses and, and, and all that kind of stuff, totally understood. But when it comes to the 40B projects, we were just asking if everybody could be a little more cautious with attendance. And that's about it. Does anybody else have anything? Hearing none, seeing none?